Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's five P. M. It's a special meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. I'll ask the city clerk, please, um, give us a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio?
Here.
Coletti?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Pedri?
Here.
Tomlinson?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Could I have approval of the agenda?
Move to approve?
Second.
And a vote, please. One item.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Tomlinson?
Aye.
Pedri?
Aye.
Coletti?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda.
We have one item in closed session. It's public employment, city manager performance evaluation. Do we have any public comment?
Uh, there's no one, uh, standing by, uh, for the meeting, and I've not let anyone else in, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, then, uh, we'll now go into closed session. Thank you, Ms. Kendell. Appreciate it.
You are welcome. I will remove those, uh, that are not part of the meeting and then make you host.
Good evening, folks. We just finished the closed session meeting. So we'll give, uh, the other council members a minute or so to get back online. Good evening again. It's, uh, Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's six P. M. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. I'll ask our city clerk, please, uh, call, roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Peak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Councilmembers Emilio?
Here.
Coletti?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Pedri?
Here.
Tomlinson?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Coletti, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Behalf to your honor, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, now, uh, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. If there's no council member objections, I'd like to move item thirteen A. That's the Rincon Agreement. This Rincon Agreement involves no city funds. The city is entirely reimbursed. If there's no objections from council.
Where do you want to move it to, Mayor?
Consent.
Oh, to consent, okay.
That's item thirteen A, the Rincon Agreement. Okay, I'm not seeing any objections. May I have a motion to approve the modified, um, agenda?
I move to approve the modified agenda.
Second.
Your Honor, I have discussion on them.
Mayor Protem Pre Smith?
I, I would just, uh, move to amend to switch the order of twelve A and twelve B because twelve B is time sensitive and I don't know how long we're going to go on the tree issue tonight.
If councilmember McAdams is fine with that, I'm fine with that.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor. I'm fine with that, too. I made the motion. I don't know if you, if I need to say that.
Okay, let's see if our city clerk has that.
Yes, I, I do. I take a vote, Mayor?
Please.
And councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmembers Pedri?
Aye.
Coletti?
Aye.
Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda as amended, moving thirteen A to the consent agenda and switching the order of twelve A and twelve B.
Thank you. Um, council and staff announcements. Let me check with our city attorney for any announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any announcements. Uh, you were in closed session, but I did not attend, so I believe you should be making that announcement.
Okay, we had one item in closed session at five o'clock. It was performance evaluation, uh, city manager Ben Harvey. There was no reportable action taken by Mr. Harvey. Do we have any staff announcements?
We do not, Mayor. Thank you.
And councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Monterey County Food Bank, Cabanas Club, and City of Monterey are hosting a community drive-through Thanksgiving. Um, delivery is also available if you are homebound. For more information, you can leave a message at eight three one, six four six, three eight six six, or sign up, uh, via Sign Up Genius. And you would search Monterey Thanksgiving Nob, N-O-B, and the number twenty-four. Also for Thanksgiving, uh, Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula, um, at the Sally Griffith Center, uh, they're accepting cards, drawings, um, and notes of holiday cheer that they distribute to local veterans and, um, of course, our, uh, seniors and recipients of Meals on Wheels. And you can just drop them off at the Sally Griffith Center. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to inform you that, um, I, I see, uh, Miss Jeannie Byrne has her hand up, uh, or now she's off the screen on my side. I don't know if she's still on. Okay, never mind.
All right, seeing no further, um, council, uh, announcements, we'll move into general public comment. We're going to start with a rotary, uh, presentation by Jeannie Byrne and Arlene Hardenstein. Welcome.
Sorry, took me a minute to get the, uh, mute off. So we have two checks to, um, donate this evening. And Arlene is the, um, has taken over the reins as chair of the Pacific Grove Auto Rally. So this is the funds that were raised in August with the Rotary, uh, managing the auto rally. So the auto rally was, um, created, I guess, basically twenty-nine years ago as a fundraiser for the Pacific Grove, uh, Youth Center. So the bulk of the, the money earned has always gone to the youth center. So this evening, we have a check in the amount of eight thousand dollars for the Pacific Grove Youth Center. I, you probably can't see the numbers on that, but that's a check for them. In addition, we have a check for the Volunteer Fire Association who helps us with the traffic control in the street. And it's, uh, they are very valuable. And we have a thousand dollar donation for the Pacific Grove Fire Association. So that's, those are two presentations. We thank you very much for your continued support of the auto rally and, and Rotary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hardenstein, do you want to add anything? I see you're behind the mask.
Yes, I'm, uh, my dad's in the hospital, so that's why, that's why I have a mask on. And he's do, and he's doing great. He's doing great. So coming home soon. We just appreciate the city's support. We re, appreciate the citizens' support. We appreciate all the businesses' support. And, uh, you know, we were very excited at how successful it was this year, and we're looking forward to two thousand and twenty-two. So thank you.
That's great.
Again, thank you all.
Thank you so, thank you so much for your generosity and dedication. Twenty-nine years. What a record. Impressive.
Well, it's been fun and couldn't do it without the city's support.
Great. Well, we'll look forward to next year as well.
Great, thank you.
Perfect. Uh, Mr. Go, did you have a comment about the auto rally?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, Ms. Byrne and Ms. Hardenstein, I just wanted to say, as, uh, manager of the recreation department, thank you very much. As we come out of the pandemic and we're really gearing up activities at the youth center and within the recreation department, this will truly come in handy. So thank you very much.
You know, I, you know, I would like to make one other comment. We would love to have, uh, the rec department give us a presentation at Rotary on where some of the funds are used. So we look forward to that next year.
We would absolutely be willing to do that. Just please let us know when.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any other, uh, public comment?
We do, your honor. Um, Tom Aikman, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I'm on, okay. I, it's Tom Aikman. And I don't want to disappoint you, but I have no money to give you, so, uh, we'll start with that. But I do have some good news for you. I'm the chair of the city's Beautification and Natural Resources Commission. And I'm calling because I want to call your attention to consent agenda items. It's eight C. And I think it belongs on the consent agenda. I'm not trying to pull it or add food. I just want to make sure people see it because it's good news. It talks about a volunteer project that's in cooperation with public works officials who are in charge. We coordinate everything we do, but it's the small restoration projects that have been started in George Washington Park. We've had a very good year at that. For you council members that were here in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, you may remember that you asked the BNRC and the rec board for some, some suggestions on what to do with Washington Park. Uh, for our part, we took the three force that's been treated as a natural area for the century that the city's owned it. And it is in bad shape, uh, but we came up with, uh, we, we went back to the master plan the city adopted in the year two thousand and never implemented because it called for a lot of money and a lot of volunteers. And we decided it's really a pretty good plan. But it was just overwhelming and what had to be done all at once. So we thought maybe we should take small projects, one by one by one, do several each year for several years, and hope we have an accumulative impact to restore the park. That's what we've been doing. Um, we started two years ago, but COVID restrictions kind of stalled us a little bit. But this year, as a result of twenty-two volunteers working around the COVID restrictions, we have two hundred and five new Monterey pine trees in Washington Park that are being watered regularly during the drought so that they're going to hopefully stay alive and have a chance for those roots to find a way to support themselves and sustain themselves forever. We've done some big plannings in cooperation with public works. We've done some little plannings with just small groups of volunteers. We have twelve people that, that at least weekly carry in water to keep the, the little, the little pines alive for the drought, uh, including Councilman Coletti, I'll say. We are in the process now of planning to do much more of the same next year and continue on for as long as we can to try to restore the park one little section at a time. It is working. It's very encouraging. And again, we have no checks for you, but I hope you'll find that encouraging and good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Aikman, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to, um, bring up that there's been an issue with sending emails to the planning commission, and I have, um, had several of my emails bounce back and have sent emails to the I T people, but I know of at least ten other people who have had emails bouncing back. So I just want to make sure that somebody is checking on this and making sure that everybody's emails get to the planning commission because this is a very important topic that's before them right now. And I want to make sure that every commissioner is receiving all of our emails. So if somebody can check on that because I know it happened, uh, again, just last night. So, uh, if that could be dealt with, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I think our city clerk, uh, has some information on that.
I, I do, Mayor. Um, I did receive some in my junk. I forwarded them to, uh, planning commission with apologies if there were any duplication. And, um, I believe our director is aware of that as well, and, um, we'll be working with, uh, I T to make sure that that gets fixed. I know there was an issue before that was fixed, and so we'll make sure that, uh, that gets fixed as well.
Thank you. Right. If there's no further public comments?
Carmelita Garcia, Mr. Mayor, uh, you have the floor, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and thank you for your service and happy Thanksgiving, if I forget to say it. I'm speaking to, uh, the last meeting where the code of conduct was, uh, adopted. And I just want to bring to your attention, um, I believe it was councilmember McAdams who had spoken to adding being prepared and, uh, coming on time to the meeting, what have you. And actually, that is part of what you adopted. It, it's, uh, under two general conduct, conduct D, which is follow through on commu, on commitments and be accountable to each other, including the commitment to start and end meetings on time, work from an agenda, and be present, attentive, and prepared. So I think that really covers being on time and, you know, having studied your agenda prior to the meeting. But I also want to speak to the fact that I'm not sure whether or not this code of conduct is applicable to the volunteers that serve the city on the boards and commissions. Um, because if it is, I'm not comfortable as a volunteer. I'm not comfortable with this because I don't feel I, as a volunteer, should be dragged into your unresolved issues that you have as council people. Um, and that there should be a separate code of conduct for us volunteers, if that's the route you want to go. Uh, personally, I don't think it's necessary, but, yeah, that's your decision. Um, I think really what is that issue here is that, um, there are a lot of different personalities going on, and there are, uh, underlying problems that all of you, uh, have or don't have, and that those need to be addressed not by way of a code of conduct, but by conversation with one another so that your differences can be ironed out, um, in a mature, adult-like way. Also, um, the censor part of this code of conduct, to me, if it were ever to be adopted, would do nothing more but open up the avenues to witch hunts. Um, and I think that is just totally inappropriate and totally unnecessary. So, um, I, I, I guess, you know, you all felt it was necessary for this code of conduct, but I think someone, uh, needs to really look at the underlying issues uh, and address those. You're a great group of people, and I hate to see the divisiveness that is occurring. Um, and, and I know you guys can get it together and work collectively and be respectful of one another. So those are my thoughts on the code of conduct. And again, thank you for your service and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiany, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peak, and members of the council. Um, I, too, am interested in the code of conduct, except I think it's a good idea. Um, I've asked and received from the city clerk a copy of the code of conduct, and one of my concerns, or at least my specific concern initially, is the attendance of the, uh, city council members as liaison to, uh, to boards, commissions, and committees. And, uh, if there's some accountability for that, because I've attended not all, but some of the, uh, various, uh, boards, commissions, and committees, uh, meetings, and it seems like there's an inconsistent attendance record for some of the council members at some of those meetings. And it's, and I think it's important that there be a liaison, that there be some, um, communication from the council to the committees and commissions and back. And I'm not sure that's happening at every level, and I would appreciate it if you can look after that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, no other raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
We'll now turn to the consent agenda. As previously discussed, it now includes item thirteen, the former thirteen A contract with Rincon Consultants, Inc., for the preparation of a focused E I R. And does any member of council wish to pull an item? Seeing none, does any member of the public wish to pull an item?
I do have a public member with their hand raised. Uh, Debbie Beck, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Um, I wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving as well. Um, I would like to pull eight A from the consent agenda.
Okay, eight A, that is, uh, check register report.
Yes.
And let's put that as thirteen B.
And I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor, the public.
Okay. With that one item, may I have a motion to approve the modified consent agenda?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Pedri?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Briefly, council just approved minutes from October twenty-seventh and November third. Council's approved, uh, new policy triple O ten on council goals. Council goals and implementation of a work plan by the city manager. We have held a second reading and adopted an ordinance to adopt Pacific Grove Municipal Title Nine, adding chapter nine point seven. And that's, uh, in regards to reducing short-lived climate pollutants in compliance with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which we'll talk about later today or tonight. We have received a report from, uh, Mary Legosca, thank you, on core revenue status for October two thousand and twenty-one. We've received a report on, uh, restoration work in George Washington Park from the, uh, BNRC Chair, Tom Aikman. Thank you. We have, well, there was no, we received a report on local emergency actions from, uh, Mr. Harvey, which there were none. Uh, and we've received minutes from the planning commission, October fourteenth, from Allison Hunter. And we've approved thirteen A contracted Rin, Rincon Consultants, preparation of a focused E I R. And that brings us to item eleven A, Jewel Park Tree Hearing. Let me get my notes out here. Just bear with me just a moment. This is a, a quasi judicial hearing on October twentieth. City council voted to rescind its earlier decision and reopen the hearing. Um, the hearing was to deny the appeal approved by the BNRC. Subsequent to that, uh, Mr. Go has requested time for presentation of new information, take questions, and rebuttal. The reopening is in accordance with that request, and the same privileges will be accorded, uh, to Ms. Perwin and Mr. Schwartz, who were the original BNRC, um, appellants. Let's see. Then, and they were notified of the process. By quasi judicial, it means council must make its decision based on facts received as evidence during the hearing. Facts include the entire agenda report, its attachments, materials submitted by staff in the appellant, and oral testimony received. The council can also take official notice of the municipal code and general plan and rely on their content. And with that, I'm going to turn, uh, for a moment to our city attorney. Since this is a reheard hearing, so all the, uh, material that was presented and heard at the prior hearing, that still applies, um, to this hearing.
Correct. That is correct.
Are there, did I get everything right, Mr. Laredo? Did you want to add anything?
I didn't hear you.
As to the process.
I did not hear any misstatements. I believe you have adequately framed this. Uh, this is quasi judicial. Uh, we build upon the materials that were already in the record, and, uh, that which is admitted in evidence in this reopened hearing until the matter's closed, and then council needs to deliberate and make its decision uh, and propose findings to support that decision.
Thank you very much. So I will start off with any declarations of ex parte communication by council members. I'm not expecting any, but this is the time. All right. Uh, seeing none, then, uh, we'll begin with the appellant, which is our public works director, uh, Dan Go. And the total allotted time is ten minutes. And if he wishes to reserve some of that time for rebuttal, he may do so. Mr. Go.
Hey, your honor, members of the city council, I'm going to have to kindly ask if I can share my screen, which I might able to do with the timer up, and I guarantee you, the timeline presentation is five minutes.
Okay.
Is it city clerk?
Yes. Okay.
I do have a brief presentation. We share that with you. Very good. Okay, very good. Thank you, uh, your honor, members of the city council. Um, again, as I specified last time during this presentation, this is an unusual one as public works is the applicant and now the appellant. I'd appreciate the time in this hearing that you've allotted me to give this presentation, provide, um, the background information and new information that has been found since the September fifteenth hearing. So just briefly tonight, the recommendation of staff is to reopen the hearing for the tree removal permit application twenty-one dash one nine nine and receive the results of the resistograph test.
and receive the results of the resistograph test, the memo from the city CGP I A and the arborist report retained by the, retained by the appellants to the BNRC, the Pierwinds, and all of those are attachments to this report. And also affirm the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one city council decision allowing removal of one American elm at Jewel Park by denying the tree appeal of the beautification and natural resources mission. Briefly, timeline and these, this timeline that you see on this page was all discussed at the last meeting. We posted the tree on July twelfth for removal. On the sixteenth of July, the sidewalk and asphalt was removed and that allowed the city arborists to review the conditions and prepare his arborist report. Uh, on July twenty-second, uh, the appeal was filed by Charles Schwartz and Patricia Purwin to the BNRC, which was heard on August seventeenth, um, which the BNRC upheld the appeal, rejected the tree approval, uh, tree removal, excuse me. On August twenty-fourth, Public Works Department submitted an appeal of the BNRC and posted the subject tree with the city council hearing information. And that hearing was heard on September fifteenth before the city council and approved, the permit was approved by a six-one vote. Since September fifteenth, um, we've had quite a few items take place. On September thirtieth, the elm tree was scheduled for removal. The um, residents nearby and friends of the elm retained a attorney that was going to order an ex parte halt of the tree removal in the Superior Court that was to be heard or decided on October seventh, but on October seventh. And they heard that on October seventh, the city council may be discussing this, so they reconsidered their temporary restraining order until the city council had further time to deliberate. Um, subsequently, on October eighteenth, arborist reports dated October fourth, twenty twenty-one were prepared by Frank Ono and a declaration by Harold Lee were submitted to the city council. Those are new attachments to the report. Um, on October twentieth, the city council opted to reopen the hearing. On October twenty-sixth, the Public Works Department initiated resistograph testing to gather further information. On uh, on November ninth, the city received a memo from the attorneys associated with the city's CGP I A, which is our insurance and risk authority. So just briefly recapping, um, what we determined from the level two assessment, which was done prior to the September fifteenth hearing. The subject tree appears to be in good health with good color. And again, it only takes a little cambium, which is the cell layer to keep a tree thriving. The root masses on the backside of the tree are creating a significant tripping and also a driving hazard in the traveling. Roots are dominant on the easterly edge of the tree where the heaving is occurring. There's also limited roots on the roadside due to past trimmings and shavings. Decay is present. The subject tree has significant decay, causing a hollow area in the trunk, twelve inches up and down into the root zone. And that decays on the westerly side of the tree, the side that the tree is leaning. This is causing us a concern. And those safety concerns that we determined from the tree evaluation is pedestrians both on the, in the park and the sidewalk and across the roadway on the sidewalk on one of our busiest roads, Forest Avenue next to the library, the museum, where we have the farmer's market, main thoroughfare for our residents, our visitors to travel to and from Lover's Point. We're concerned with vehicles both parked and traveling. If this tree was to fall and hit one of those vehicles traveling, who knows what could happen if somebody was in one of those cars? And we're also concerned with the targets, the structures. To determine what we found on the level two assessment, we initiated resistograph testing. The Frank Ono report that was prepared and provided to the city council specifies additional testing should be done before condemnation. We did that testing. What resistograph testing does is it will detect wood decay, stages of rot, hollow areas, cracks in ring structure, and will allow arborists determine this, determines tree stability and longevity. We performed the test on all four sides of the tree. The most predominant um, the most predominant what was concluded from the test um, and the most predominant conclusions from those tests were on the west side, where we took the test eighteen inches above the cavity and also on the east side of the tree. So the backside, if you're on in the park, forty-eight inches above grade were taken. We did those at those heights because we wanted to confirm our level two assessment of the hollow area above the cavity. And then we wanted to, we did forty-eight inches above grade on the backside of the tree. We wanted to see how far up that decay went into the tree. Here are the results. On the west side, what you're seeing at the top of the screen, going from right to left, you have a bark layer. And then I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but you have a bark layer and then some heartwood. And then you have a very significant cavity, about five to six inches of cavity. A little heartwood again, and then about five inches of decay followed by more decay. The graph on the bottom is the resistograph test taken at forty-eight inches above grade, so thirty inches above where we took the first test on the west side. And you can still see that very predominant decay traveling upwards into the tree. Four feet up into the tree trunk, there is decay. That causes a significant concern and has reinforced the facts and the findings of the level two assessment. We have explored all alternatives and there are solutions to the sidewalk. Those, some of those solutions have been brought forth to us and to the city council. We've explored root pruning, reinstalling the sidewalk, the relocation, cabling and bracing. But staff does not recommend any of these alternatives due to the liability, the safety concerns. And those are all reinforced by the findings from the additional testing. We cannot dispute the findings from those resistograph tests. So in conclusion, the municipal code twelve dash oh-two-zero-four-zero pruning and removal of protected trees sets the criteria for removals. We are within these criterias, high risk, damage caused by the tree. Uh, the tree is necessarily to remove due to wildfire risk. Now that doesn't um, come into play here, but it is definitely a nuisance tree with the concerns and liability that it's expressing. The tree meets three of these criterias. The additional testing validates our level two assessment findings, which the city council adopted at their nine fifteen council meeting. Public Works and the city arborists have reviewed and explored all of our options. The subject tree again is a liability. These additional tests confirm that. We did these additional tests to confirm what we found on our level two assessment. Public Works is responsible for the safety of the public. And with this action, we are acting responsible. As also stated in the CGP I A memo, due to the reports from the twenty twenty-one, the tree reports, the city will have actual notice of a dangerous condition of public property. This is concerning to us. Staff recommends the tree removal. The tree is in poor health with advanced decay, has a predominant lean towards the west on the decay side, has a high target rating, has caused a significant trip hazard and liability to the city. Risk is retained. Risk, if retained, is extremely high, as noted in the memo prepared on the behalf of the CGP I A. I'm available for any questions, comments or rebuttal along with our city arborists. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now go out to public comment. We're gonna start with the original appellants. That would be Patricia Purwin and Charles Schwartz. And they have uh, combined together ten minutes and followed by the public, which will have two minutes each. Um, Ms. Perwin or Mr. Schwartz, are you ready to begin?
You have the floor, Ms. Perwin.
Welcome.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Welcome.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Welcome. Well, thank you for hearing us and we wish you all a great Thanksgiving. I'm gonna put my wife, Patricia Purwin on. She's gonna speak. I'm gonna, it'll take a second, but she'll be speaking. Thank you very much.
Oh, good evening, Mayor Peak and members of the city council. Um, when my husband and I purchased our home almost nine years ago, our decision was based in large part on its location across the street from Jewel Park, where one of the few remaining well-established upper canopy American elm trees in not only our own coastal zone, but in the entire world is still in existence. Just as there are some people who will pay more for an ocean view, there are others like ourselves who place an equally high value on seeing the canopy of a mature tree outside their window. Although our Victorian cottage is small, it has characteristically high ceilings and tall window casements of that period and upon which I have never hung curtains, for that would only serve to hide from view the extensive beauty of the American elm's canopy that we behold from almost every window of our house. So in July, when a notice was posted on her that she was being condemned to death for quote unquote obstructing hardscape, something that wasn't even her fault, but that the city bore responsibility for and something very easy to remedy with today's permeable sidewalks, we quite naturally rushed to her defense. As we all know, our appeal was upheld by the BNRC because in these times of climate change, when the future sustainability and livability of cities will depend on retaining such well-established trees as our elm, it's always preferable to find a way to accommodate a tree's roots rather than taking the life of a healthy tree. Next, the Public Works Department decided to label the tree hazardous. So in an effort to understand this new and previously unmentioned allegation, we enlisted the services of David Hollingsworth, a longtime and well-respected local attorney who's, who immediately deemed our case to be a worthy cause. Mr. Hollingsworth procured the sworn declarations made under penalty of perjury of two former City of Pacific Grove arborists, Frank Ono and Hal Lee, who between them both have served the city for twenty years. Both attested to the elm's health in detailed reports that are included in our application for temporary restraining order and immediate stay filed with the Superior Court of California. And yet, as recently as November ninth, the city council received a poorly worded memorandum from your own insurance company in Pasadena erroneously stating, among other things, that quote, "Two residents filed an impassioned plea to preserve the tree, but they submit no certified arborist's report addressing the health of the tree," unquote. Knowing your own insurance company has been supplied with false and easily refutable information in a court of law gives genuine cause for concern. Since our having been granted a stipulation and continuance by the Superior Court of California, the city has conducted level three resistograph testing on the tree. And we engaged the services of Tori Young, an unbiased resistograph tester who specializes in tree litigation proceedings to evaluate the city's testing results. Tori informed us that the testing was done with equipment that is not up to current industry standards and that the four holes drilled were drilled in such a way as to render the findings inconclusive and therefore unusable in a court of law. Speaking of which, in the course of our efforts to save the life of the elm tree and Jewel Park, we had hoped to have some positive interactions with the city whereby an agreement could have been reached outside of a court of law. No one likes needless litigation that is costly to both sides. But I must say that nothing prepared us for the level of bullying and stonewalling that we've been met with by the city at every turn. These tactless measures invariably prove to be counterproductive, however, as they ultimately only serve to reinforce the determination of those being deliberately ignored to have their voices heard. For what must be emphasized and very clearly understood in the case of our elm tree is that when a tree exhibits all the signs of health, that she so clearly does. Unglimished bark, well-distributed healthy branches, vigorous green canopy. They are the key indicators of a healthy, well-functioning root system and of a decay pocket that has been well-compartmentalized. They are the key indicators used by urban foresters worldwide to determine that a tree is healthy and they are the key indicators that are abundantly present in our elm tree. But what must be further emphasized and very clearly understood is how important the elm tree is to the people of Pacific Grove, as evidenced by the passion she has aroused in them to save her. Because the truth of the matter is that the whole community owns her and she is not only their lungs, she is a part of their hearts and souls. So, how then can we best accommodate her roots and build a sidewalk too? Just as cities around the world are doing in an effort to retain urban vegetation as they race to combat climate change. All of our research points to bridging a new permeable sidewalk over the roots that will not compact them during installation. Then putting the six-inch curb into one parking space to protect the tree from traffic. Finally, a pruning of the canopy, which is helpful for all trees and our elm has long been neglected. These are simple, doable steps that achieve everyone's goals. So, in the spirit of the elm tree, let us bridge our own differences in her best interests. For, as Charles Dickens eloquently remarked in the nineteenth century, when upon visiting the United States, he first beheld an American elm tree. They bring about a kind of compromise between town and country as if both sides had met halfway and shaken hands upon it. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Well now, um, we'll now go out for a public comment, two minutes each.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we have a telephone number, last digits are eight-five-nine. You have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, Janet Cohen. I wasn't planning on speaking first, but um, I was impressed by her, the last speaker's presentation. And I wanted to say, um, it's been exciting to read about rubber, rubberway sidewalks. And, and it's an amazing product that recycles tires, lessens harm to root, tree roots and is safer pedestrians. This is the best product I've read about. This is the best product I've read about in years. Thank you, Rebecca Lee, for letting us know. Hopefully Rubberway will save the elm tree and many others in PG. I'm sure that the tree protection discrepancy between our municipal code and the LCP was in oversight, but it's very important to change for consistency and because trees in the coastal zone often face more stress frontline from the harsher winds and storms coming in and making land. If you watch the Monterey pines with evidence of pine pitch canker, you will see the disease progress more quickly, resulting in death the closer the trees are to the open ocean. So many are already gone. Pine pitch canker was brought to my attention by one of my daughter's research papers in high school around 1999. I've seen this devastating disease unfold ever since with tree after tree drying off. Incidentally attacking our Monterey pines like the early uncontrolled AIDS epidemic did to humans, pine pitch canker doomed the trees to fail before their time. All the more reason to do everything possible to save as many trees as we can, especially those seemingly immune to the disease, including the elm and the protected cypress trees to be removed from the proposed ATC Hotel project. Thank you so much for trying to save the beautiful elm and also for putting language matching our municipal code protected trees on the list of corrections that needs to be made to the local coastal program. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
I had a hand raised, I think, oh yes, we do. Rebecca Lee, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Greetings, Mayor and council members. We've been at this for three months now, three months negotiating the life of this tree. What does it mean? It's a groundswell of desperation to take tangible action to respond to climate change, and it represents a refusal to allow business as usual here when it comes to insensitivity to trees. In researching alternative sidewalks, it's been a delight for me, and I'm impressed by Rubberway products for our elm. I'm elated that such products already exist and yet shocked that we are not using any when they've been available for decades. Rubberway is used nationwide, looks like regular sidewalk is non-slip and cost-effective. It's tree-sensitive and permeable, so helps with stormwater management and is ADA compliant. It was designed to avert lawsuits from sidewalk tripping and to save cities' money by reducing the need to remove trees. Rubberway is used by the City of Monterey and has installers in Monterey and Salinas that our staff could reference, but the company claims installation is simple and has guiding do-it-yourself videos. Our tree mitigation practices are archaic and desperately need updating. We need a tree committee. I'm very serious. It's clear our urban forestry has declined in the last decade and needs help. I want to be on this committee, please. For cost, to meet the ADA requirements for a rerouted sidewalk, I got an estimate from Rubberway. For 30 feet of five-foot-wide sidewalk, it was $3,000, including shipping. The city has not yet contacted the company, and its gross estimate of $15,000 to $35,000 seems very premature to make, and it does not count the thousands of dollars in savings by leaving this tree in place. The momentum is here to get new volunteers involved. This is a process that's going to require a bit of time, but the rewards from which are huge, literally huge, and strong and green. Thank you very much for rehearing this.
Thank you.
Carrie Rotoli, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, yes, this is Carrie Rotoli. Regarding the elm tree at Jewel Park, I want to express my admiration and appreciation once again for this unique and beautiful tree. I know that you have received a lot of information that speaks to the resilience and the longevity of this tree, not the least of which is statements by several arborists that highlight the lush green canopy as a very real indicator of the tree's overall health. So I hope you will pursue alternatives to replacing the concrete sidewalk where it has been removed. Consider these alternatives carefully with the understanding that, you know, you have potential to do something really great. With proper care, this tree, most trees, really, will endure for decades, if not centuries. And we owe it to ourselves, to our community, to give our trees every chance for the longest life possible. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda Downey, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for listening to my comments. I'm attending this meeting with my 11-year-old daughter who goes to school in the City of Pacific Grove. We walk past this elm tree every day on our travels around our dear city and spend hours and hours in Jewel Park. She's very interested in what's going to happen here in our community in relationship to our commitment to healthy air, reducing global warming, and keeping a treeed city. So I hope you take your role very seriously in the message that you're sending to the young people in the community. They learn in school about all of these topics. I want them to feel like they have something to be excited about, about our town and how we're a forward-thinking community that is willing to set aside rectangular squares to accommodate nature in our community. And as I listen to Rebecca Lee, as she communicates all of these options and all of this information, this information, I find myself wondering whether the city employees are working hard enough to bring full information to the county, I mean, to the city council. And I, as I review the information, and I find myself concerned about the quality of the equipment that was used for the resistograph testing, for the experience level of the individuals. And so again, I ask myself if these city employees that are bringing recommendations to the council are really working hard enough to provide you with full information about the options available. It seems to me that they should be the ones bringing those to you and not a citizen named Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Baraboe, you have the floor.
Welcome.
You'll need to unmute yourself, Ms. Baraboe.
Okay, okay, yes, I'll be short. I just want to voice my support for keeping the elm tree. I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to see that the tree is obviously healthy. I don't, quite frankly, understand all the studies, but I think it takes two good eyes and integrity to say that it should be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. The tree permit for the elm was quote, "approved for removal because the tree is causing significant damage to hardscape." For Public Works, it's an infrastructure issue, as the director told BNRC chair on July 13. Frank Ono provides the city's urban tree standards at the end of his report, but it was not referenced by city staff. The priority has been infrastructure, not protecting a healthy, mature tree. PG's Urban Tree Standards lists 17 strategies to reduce infrastructure damage potential by using alternative design methods to reduce tree infrastructure conflicts. Rebecca and Patricia have researched, consulted experts, and provided documentation that there are good alternatives where both the tree and the sidewalk can be accommodated safely. The tree isn't going to just keel over. It can live a long life with imperfections, just like we humans can. How many imagined killer trees do we have in PG that will be sacrificed for sidewalks that won't be rerouted or adjusted? The joint powers attorney has presented a no-win scenario for the tree, basing it on inaccurate information. The independent arborist he refers to is the city's arborist. That's not independent. If Public Works says a tree is a hazard, which they base on the illogical option of potentially pruning the roots more than he, than has already been done, and even though that assessment is disputed by experienced, respected arborists, the attorney claims there's a liability that's inescapable. He fails to acknowledge potential options for correcting the hardscape issues and states erroneously that many options besides root pruning have been attempted unsuccessfully. According to the attorney, simply saying a tree is dangerous creates liability, whether or not it's accurate. This marvelous elm needs proper care, and ADA-compliant sidewalk alternatives need to be provided. Please investigate how the city's trees, it impact infrastructure, can be preserved using actual independent landscape experts, starting with this elm. Thank you.
Bill, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Bill, you have the floor.
Welcome. Are you not able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So I had a little talk prepared, and after listening to everybody talk here, I'm gonna stray from that a little bit. I think most of you on city council have received an email from me talking about the Prometheus tree. It was a tree that was cut down 40, 50 years ago in the Great Basin National Forest. And the cutting down of that tree was based on some information provided to the Forest Service. They approved the cutting down of that tree. And it turns out that the tree had great significance. It was a 5,000-year-old tree. So the Forest Service didn't do their due diligence in assessing all of the information. And I would suggest to each and every one of you on the city council to review the history of the Prometheus tree and fully review all of the information that's been presented to you to make sure that we don't make another great, great mistake here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Merriam-Webster defines the phrase, "You can't see the forest or the trees" to not understand or appreciate a larger situation or problem because one is only considering a few parts of it. In this case, for the elm tree, this is the case for the elm tree at Jewel Park. On July 11th, a request was made by the Public Works to remove the subject tree for repairs to the street and the sidewalk. As noted, the sidewalk and street had been repaired several times before. However, Public Works failed to understand or appreciate the larger situation because they only considered one part, the tree. Thus, they failed to apply for a coastal permit to reconstruct the street and the sidewalk, which is in the coastal zone. A coastal permit is required for the development in coastal zone, and development is defined as quote, "construction, reconstruction, demolition, or alteration of the size of any structure, including any facility of any private, public, or municipal utility, including roads." Therefore, the whole project, demolition, construction of a public road of any size and the removal of the tree must be reviewed in the context of a coastal development permit, where the entire project, including the health of the tree and also archaeological review, must be done. This is a case where we have the fox looking after the hen house. That's another story for another time. Please consider the fact that Rebecca's brave climb into the elm tree got us to look at the tree, but we also need to look beyond it. We need to see the larger issue of the tree's narrow point of view and its attempt to wave its way past the coastal zone. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and return to Mr. Go. Did you reserve time? Would you like to make a rebuttal?
Maybe one minute, Your Honor, if you would allow me to, please.
Sure.
I would just like to state that, yes, you've heard many members of the public speaking today about sidewalk replacement and infrastructure. And this project did start with a trip hazard, a significant trip hazard in one of the city's parks. And that prompted Public Works to remove the sidewalk. That also prompted Public Works to evaluate the tree. And it seems like most of the comment you've received via email and that you've heard today, and also on September 15th, specifies how, why can't we just put the sidewalk back and keep both the tree and replace the sidewalk? We could do that. The liability of this tree that we've received, the future, the more testing on, is still there. We put the sidewalk back, that tree's still got cavities, this tree still has decayed, the tree's still a future liability for the City of Pacific Grove. It's my duty as your Public Works Director to make sure we limit that liability. Many of the comments you've heard today say that I'm withholding information. There's 12 attachments to this packet, to this item. I've provided all of this to the members of the public, the members of the elm. I've communicated with them numerous times via the phone, in person, at the park, discussing it with them. You have all the information to make a sound decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That now closes the public hearing. We go into the council discussion phase. I'm gonna lead off as I asked for council's approval for rehearing or reopening of this hearing. I thank my colleagues very much for allowing that to happen. So what, what we've just heard is a comprehensive report from staff, expert opinion, a letter from an attorney, outside attorney, indicating in their expert opinion that this tree needs to be cut down and the main reason being safety. And while I agree the main concern is safety, but we're also hearing from the public which says that they would like to see all options explored for this, this tree to survive. And so, and I'm not hearing any options on the table from staff. So I'd like to enlist the help of the community. I'd like, like a RFP to go out to ask for or solicit proposals as to how we might save this tree and make it safe. And that's, that's my bottom line, is those two things need to happen. Safety is paramount in my estimation. So with my colleagues, with your concurrence, it would be a continuation of this hearing to allow time for an RFP to be implemented to hear from the community their ideas, their proposals, and costs of how to make, preserve this tree and make it safe. And if that is approved, then I'd also direct our city attorney. We've heard a lot of talk about sidewalks. And I'm not, I'm not sure as to why, what are the regulations? What's the law say about the sidewalk on the west side of Jewel Park? And so if you're willing to support the RFP, then I'd also like to hear from our city attorney in the future, maybe now, as to what, what regulations govern this sidewalk. We have lots of parks that don't have sidewalks, by the way. Caledonia, Berwick, George Washington Park. Caledonia, Berwick, George Washington Park. So I'm not sure why people are focused on that. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask you to clarify for me, the, the RFP, I heard you say that it would be for members of the community or really anyone to respond to with ideas and costs. Is this more of like a consulting RFP? Or is it a, I'm gonna do the work and, and see this project through RFP? What, what are you imagining?
I guess I would leave, I would leave that up to staff that could be written two different ways. I hadn't thought of that.
Well, I, I just go ahead.
Sorry, I mean, for me, ideally, it would be for an outside company, a person to do the work with the oversight of city staff.
So the, my understanding of RFPs is, you know, when Public Works put one, puts one together, the entire scope of work of what they're wanting to have done is understood and therefore then different companies who are in that field of work bid on it and then we pick the bid. So that seems like maybe a step two. Because we don't have that defined yet. And so maybe, I'm, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but what you're suggesting is more of an idea, RFP, and, and plausibility so that it would feed into an eventual RFP that would would go out to the construction crew that would do the project. I mean, I'm supportive of the idea and that I just, I'm trying to understand how, how to go about it. And I, I guess, Mr. Go, I would ask you what your thoughts are. Being an RFP expert that you are.
Councilmember Tomlinson through the mayor. Be very tricky. I'm, I'm with, I'm already racking my brain about how I would write this and what type of solicitation I would be receiving. We can do the work. I, I, I'm not disputing that we can't do the work or get creative. I have the document that Miss Lee provided to us that gives us plenty of alternatives. That, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to come up with a solution to rebuild the sidewalk. That's not, that's not what I'm focused on here. I'm focused strictly on the liability of the tree to the city. I can rebuild the sidewalk. I have staff that can rebuild the sidewalk and put it in. It's not about an RFP or figuring out a solution. I could come up with that. It's about limiting the liability that's put on the city that is known with this tree. I don't know what I would receive from an RFP. I don't know how I would write it. I don't know what it would consist of. There's no plans. There's no direction. We would get three hundred different suggestions. And I've spent so much staff time on this, all of us have already. Staff time that we should be concentrating our effort somewhere else. If we retain the tree, I will replace the sidewalk. But the liability is still there.
Thank you. So, yeah, Mayor, I just would want to expand more on what, what it is that you are suggesting or asking that we get from the RFP that you have in your mind. That'd be my question for you.
Well, I, I, let me elaborate just a little bit and then we'll go on to other council members. But the, the RFP would be proposals to secure, may not be the right word, but, you know, mechanically, it might be the right one. Secure the tree so that it, it is not mitigates the, the safety aspects. And I'm, at this point, I'm not concerned about the sidewalk and that wouldn't be part of the proposal. It would be mitigating the safety aspect while keeping the tree. I'm not so concerned about the parking. I'm, I'm not concerned about sidewalk. So the proposal would be for whatever folks think that would be appropriate to keep the tree and mitigate the liability from the tree falling. And we, we heard a number of items that talked about bracing and cabling and pruning and so forth. And I know that our Public Works Department has dismissed all of that. And so that's why I'm suggesting going out. And I, and I respect our Public Works Department. You know, and I'm not asking them to change their professional opinion. Their opinion is none of that works and we shouldn't be doing it. So I'm, I'm asking for outside, outside help. And let's, let's put that on the table. I think that's what the community is asking us to do. Yeah. Councilmember McAdams, I've talked too long.
Thank you, Mayor. And if at some point we get to a motion and that turns into a motion, I would be happy to support that. I do have to say that in the options that were provided in our agenda packet, you know, there were several move the, move the sidewalk. Was like five thousand, cut the sidewalk and obtain ADA slope estimate fifteen to thirty-five thousand. That was great. I appreciated these ideas, but there weren't any drawings or, I mean, it was just, I understand that's conceptual. But for me, with, you know, what Miss Lee provided, had drawings, which was even more helpful, which, which, which really helped me understand, you know, the, the level of of work that would need to be done and the, the three drawings that were provided in her information. So I am a little bit disappointed. I was hoping that that is what we would get from staff as well. To sort of, you know, see, you know, bracing the tree is estimated cost of twenty thousand. I mean, to put that all together with, with some sort of drawings. So I, I am not at all in support or ready to say yes, remove the tree because for me, clearly there are alternatives. And unfortunately, we don't know what those are. So I'm definitely interested in, in obtaining more information and, you know, having the city go out and obtain. You know, maybe it's, it's a request for design or what Councilmember Tomlinson said, like a, a request for ideas, a request for solutions, or it looks clearly that we have the options. We just don't necessarily know what those look like. So, you know, I do thank staff for, for including these other options, but I do want more information. And the message is loud and clear, what the community is wanting. And, and that is for us to go to great lengths to, to make sure that we do not remove this tree. And so, you know, I, I, it's already been a few months. It could be another month. I don't necessarily think that you know, a little bit longer will hurt. We just saw two very severe weather situations and we had multiple trees throughout the city fall. And, and this tree did not. So, you know, for me, that would have been the opportunity. I, I think we experienced winds that we have never experienced before. So I, I'm definitely not ready to, to support removing the tree and I, I will support a, a motion if made by the mayor for, for continuance. Thank you.
Councilmember Coletti, followed by Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do think it's time to go out and explore alternatives. The public's provided a lot of options to us. And I, I think this is a great opportunity for all of us to learn from this. And I, I don't see it as confrontational. I, I see it as an exchange of ideas and it is the people's part. And they have come out and forced to let us know how they'd like the park cared for. And I do respect that. I do think, I agree with the mayor, this process does need a neutral third party. I do support the idea of an RFP. And that would be soliciting, in my mind, a tree preservationist, preservationalists, a service provider that is, is qualified as a tree preservationalist who can come up with the mitigation measures and, and plans and proposals that we can use to help, help secure, you know, the, the longevity of this tree. There were some, several good declaration by Harold Lee, talking about, you know, the actual, the volume of, if you look at the tree in terms of just occupying of, of volume, a cylinder and how much of that still has integrity, I'd like to see that further explored, perhaps through sonic tomography. The risk, the resistograph measurements or point measurements, they don't really give you an overall sense of the healthy portion of the tree that remains. Their little snapshots at certain points, they're just essentially their cross sections. And, and narrowly focused cross sections as well. So I think we do need to look at this in a, in a broader context as far as the available technology that people use to make these assessments. There aren't qualified people that do this. And I don't think we can do anything less than to engage the best service provider that we can get to help us make this analysis. I, I think some of this analysis that we've received so far is subjective. It's in mind. So the structural analysis of a tree is very complex. I won't, I won't deny that. Most structural analysis is are, especially when you, certain by, involving a biological, you know, an organism. But we do need to do the best we can do to make that assessment. So I do, I, I think we, we need to go out and like the mayor suggests, submit or, or release an RFP for tree preservationalists to come and help us find a, a way forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Mr. Go and staff for actually providing this additional findings. I would also like to thank the community, Mr. Schwartz, Ms. Pervin, several community members who have written in. Thank you for your feedback. I, I, I do think that the, really the, the, at the end, the, really the root cause of this issue really is around safety and liability. And between September and today, I have not seen anything which says that we have gotten rid of the safety issue, nor have we gotten rid of the liability issue. To me, this presents the risk and, and I, I, I think we should look at it in a different angle. Instead of spending money to go out to RFP, et cetera. Possibly we could consider planting more trees. I mean, we, we've already considered like a couple of trees in here that we can plant in the absence of this tree. Maybe we can expand it to six trees or even more because I think that is actually money well spent in general. But having said that, I, I still am not convinced that we have gotten rid of the safety or liability issue. And the RFP process itself could drag, I know, I don't know for how long. So I'm not in, in favor of the RFP process and I go with the original recommendation we made on September for the tree. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna go through a lot of the comments in the, from all the parties involved. My hand down here. And the continuing everywhere from wife's this comments of BNRC dealing with public safety is the overriding concern. Is that kind of, bear with me here. In Mr. Go's report, talks about the safety concerns. Mr. Ono's report talks about, and I'm summarizing a lot of this. I had a lot written down, but he talked about making sure you do wristograph testing, which was done by the city. And Harold Lee's declaration, looking at it, he talks about seventy percent or more of the integrity of the wood. I, I don't know how he came up with seventy percent. Is it sixty? Is it fifty? He just came up with seventy. I didn't quite understand it. And looking at the memorandum of understanding from the attorney, the key is, is liability and safety. And we talked about in their thing that some branches have fallen and PG residents have gotten hurt, APG resident got hurt, one died. So I'm also concerned about the safety and liability of it. I feel, and I also want to thank Mr. Go and Public Works for all their work they've done these past few months. We did vote six, one to remove the tree. And I'm, I am not for the RFP process. I think we have to look at the liability. I understand the emotional and I appreciate the emotion in, from all the residents that have spoken including, including Schwart, Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Schwartz. I know it's an emotional issue, but I must stand on the safety and liability of this tree. And what's gonna happen in a few months, they've already done all the work on the wristograph and stuff. So I, I cannot support the RFP process. They've already done a lot of work, public works along with the wristographs.
Mayor Protempore Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I'm with Councilmembers Pedori and Emilio on this issue. I, my first priority obviously is, well, even before I get to that, I think there's, sometimes more information does not always improve the decision-making process. It sometimes it does. In this case, I don't think it does. We have before us a safety concern that's present currently. And so mainly because of safety, the residents and the visitors down there in a park, walking underneath the tree. I know I've done it a million times. I know my children have. And all the folks that go to the farmer's market. I just think with that safety concern and given that we are now on actual notice of a dangerous condition of public property, we're, we're liable for any injury to the, a member of the public. And if, if it was a severe injury or something like that, and we could be talking millions of dollars. So I, I'm, I like the idea of planting more trees elsewhere or wherever we can. I mean, if you look at the, the park, Jewel Park, there are a lot of trees there. And it's a beautiful canopy. And so, you know, if we can improve that part, that would be great, or perhaps a different place. But I know all the great work that the BNRC has done at George Washington Park. And was, was referenced earlier, but at the end of the day, I do think RFP processes tend to drag on. And we have this ongoing safety issue. And so on those grounds, I, I support staff's recommendation tonight.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, thanks for all the great discussion and call-ins and emails and comments and work that's gone into this to everybody who's listening and on the call, including staff. And I, I just think unfortunately in this situation, it's a little, it's, it's, we have an ordinance. It says, it defines when a tree is past its prime and, and how to make sure that we ensure safety in our And how to make sure that we ensure safety in our community. And this tree checks three of the four boxes, uh, as it was said tonight. We, um, almost unanimously, but six to one agreed, uh, to that. About two months ago, and I still feel that. This tree i- is actually more of a safety risk than even then because of the increased testing, which I appreciate the city taking the time to do. Um, I love all the ideas that have come up. I think we could, uh, you know, put, go down that path, but, uh, I, I'm not. I, I, I don't think that's what we should do. I think we need to remove this tree. Um, and replace more trees. And that is how our canopy will sustain rather than watching trees fall down and having no. Replacement in order. I mean, when a storm comes, it was just said that we had a storm. We did lose a lot of trees in our community. And guess what? Those ones that just fell over because of their decay and their age. They were not replaced. Nobody's on the hook to replace those trees. It is our responsibility to remove this tree responsibly and replace this tree responsibly. And I. Propose that we replant with, I think Chap said six, make it ten. I mean, if we wanted to spend thirty thousand dollars on rubber sidewalks, spend it on ten more trees for our community. So. That would be my recommendation is to, uh, um, uphold the action. To remove this tree and replace it with multiple other trees, um, to thrive in our community. Thanks.
Uh, I move to continue this hearing to provide time for. An RFP to solicit proposals from a qualified arborist. To preserve the tree. And secure it to reduce liability.
Second.
Second.
And, okay, and also direct the city, the city attorney to, um. Invest to tell us what the legal requirements are for a sidewalk on the west side of Jewel Park. And I think Councilmember Coletti is already seconded that.
Yes, already seconded.
All right. Thank you. May we have a vote, please?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
No.
Councilmembers Emilio?
No.
Coletti?
Aye.
McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
No.
Tomlinson?
No.
Motion fails. Three to four.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
I make a, I'll make a motion, Mayor, to move the recommended action to, to, and then to. Add the replacement of the tree, uh, with five additional trees. Of similar species.
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Paduri?
Aye.
McAdams?
No.
Coletti?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
No.
Motion carries four to zero.
Four, three, I believe.
I'm, I'm sorry. You're correct. Four to three.
We'll now move on to, um, the former item twelve B. Which is, uh, SB thirteen eighty-three implementation and green waste change of control. Mr. Schneider, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers and members of the public for having me. Uh, Sandra, if I may, um, I would like to share my screen. Which I think is working. All right. Thank you all for being here today. I would like to, uh, discuss and, uh, present. Our, uh, last steps to the SB thirteen eighty-three implementation as well as, uh. Item which regarding the change of control of green waste recovery. Just a, a brief recap, uh, you heard this at your last council meeting, but SB thirteen eighty-three is a state law. Which were required to implement. The goal of this law is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. By reducing organic food that ends up in our, and food that ends up in the landfill. Uh, the requirements are for local agencies to provide the service for that food collection. Um, so that it might be composted instead and provide enforcement. So far the actions to date, staff has been working with the technical advisor committee to, uh, discover and implement. And bring forward, uh, ideas about how to implement the, uh, law SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, received, the city councils received presentations from our consultant HFNH. Uh, the monitor regional waste management district and city staff on this topic throughout this last year. Recently, council approved a one point eight percent, uh, rate increase that was slated specifically for. SB thirteen eighty-three implementation. And, uh, the first reading and now the second reading of the municipal code has been heard to, uh. Amend the municipal code for the implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three. The change of control. So with green waste recovery, uh. Being purchased by MIRA, which is a, uh, a, a different body than owns Green Waste Recovery now. Uh, there is a due diligence that is required, um, on our behalf to. Look in to see and make sure that this new company will be able to properly manage green waste recovery. Uh, in order to continue to fulfill its obligations to the city. HFNH consulting provided, uh, that due diligence report. Uh, for anyone who's read it, there. Is also incorporated in that, the, uh, Santa Cruz County, Santa Cruz County. And the member agencies on the peninsula which use green waste recovery. Decided to go in on a, a report because we use green waste recovery in much the same way as the county of Santa Cruz. So if you see Santa Cruz inside that report, that is the, the reason why. It was a cost savings measure on, on both, uh, parts. So the franchise amendment, so the agreement that we have now with, uh, green waste recovery. Does not cover the collection and processing of. The organic matter that I was discussing earlier. So the scope of our franchise agreement has changed in order to comply. With SB thirteen eighty-three. Other items that are in this franchise agreement are memorializations of the, uh, present rate change methodology. Uh, a methodology has been, uh, slightly changed and, uh, new methods have been. Uh, agreed upon by both parties in the past. And now we're just coming up with, uh, a. Methodology and in incorporating that into the, the new, uh, amendment so that it becomes part of the agreement. What that does, that just helps us kind of solidify what actually happened and what the model is, uh, going forward. It also, uh, consists of the cha- change of control language, which would, uh, allow, uh, green waste recovery. To fulfill its obligations to us whilst being, um, purchased by a different entity. It also more memorializes some of the, uh, report items and details that have been discussed and finessed. And we've kind of as staff and, uh, um, consultants and green waste recovery have discussed in the past how these, uh, reports. Should be changed through time and they've been very, um, obliging to change those reports. We're now just kind of bringing those report details into part of the agreement. So it's not just a handshake deal. It's actually in the agreement itself. There's also going to be a rate increase associated with the implementation of SB thirteen eighty-three. In addition to that one point eight percent that was, uh, done in June of, uh, this, uh, year. Uh, this will simplify the rate increase coming for this next, uh, rate increase, which is going to be in July twenty twenty-two. It will simplify that process so that we'll be able to maintain just a, a simple, uh, index, um, adjustment, uh. Which is similar to basically increasing the rates based on, uh, you know. CPI, that sort of thing. So there's different indices that are used. We'll, we'll be able to use that simpler, uh, methodology in just, uh, about seven months. And, uh, that'll be a much smoother process for, uh, all parties involved. So in review, our proposed actions, uh, we want to, uh, council to approve the change of control. Uh, which is going to be part of the franchise, um, in, uh, agreement amendments and to, uh. Uh, approve the, uh, rate increase of an additional five point zero seven percent in order to, um. Implement SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, the deadline to. Have all this implemented is January one, twenty twenty-two, so it's just around the corner. Uh, by doing these three, I, um, carrying forward with these, uh, three items. It will allow us to effectively implement the organics collections for curbside, uh, residences, both single and multifamily. So the recommendation is to authorize the mayor to execute the attached amendment to the franchise agreement with Green Waste Recovery Incorporated. Which includes provisions bringing the city and contractor into compliance with requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three. Resolving green waste recoveries claims for extraordinary rate adjustment related to, uh, unanticipated events that impacted the franchise agreement. Clarify the process and the results of the cost-based rate adjustment and approving, uh, as. An assignment of the franchise agreement resulting from the change of ownership of green rice recovery. And approve a resolution for green rice recovery rate adjustment based on the agenda report to increase solid waste fees. For the related to SB thirteen eighty-three by five point zero seven percent. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I don't believe this contract is the best Pacific Grove could have negotiated for. A large hedge fund just took over green waste and today's report even required. An extra errata sheet to supposedly correct, but ultimately raise the rate even more. I'm not an accountant, but I do believe that unjustifiable charges have been incorporated in this contract. Under the guise of complying with SB thirteen eighty-three. With Caleb Schneider leaving Pacific Grove for the greener pastors of Oregon. I wish him well, but I doubt that anyone in this city is really going to hold this multifaceted corporation accountable. For ever more skyrocketing charges and real reporting requirements. This city has a habit of destroying records and tries to wipe out history. And continuity with great regularity. This contract is especially egregious to low-income homeowners. Who generate very little waste. Cost needs to be adjusted for actual use. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, no, their hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
I will close public comment and open council discussion. Councilmember Padori?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Schneider, for the presentation. Uh, I know this is a priority item. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. The, um, uh, so, so the new company, will it still be called Green Waste Recovery? Or i- is the company still going to remain the same, right?
Green Waste Recovery and its, um, managers and such will stay in place. It's just the company that holds ownership of Green Waste Recovery, uh, will be changing. And Emily Hanson is on, uh, as well. She's with Green Waste Recovery and she might be able to better answer, uh, in more detail that question if she likes.
Okay, um, I, I was just concerned whether like this buying up, uh, of, by a certain entity implies, uh. Like the city, like working with somebody like in the east coast. I mean, they're all bait. All the employees, et cetera, will stay here, right? Correct?
No, no, no. We'll be working with the same individuals in place. Uh, they've, as, as part of the agreement is to, to retain, um, basically from the. Management down. Really all that's going to change is, uh, at the board level, uh, with regards to the management of green rice recovery.
Got it. And then the other question, uh, it, it appears that this is, this is an exercise, uh, possibly that is being conducted by other cities too. Because all of them are contracting with, uh, green waste as well in, in the nearby area. So, so is it, no, fair to assume that the similar report is being conducted? Or being presented by other cities too?
Correct. Yes, uh, our partner agencies along the peninsula that utilize greenest recovery. Are using much of the same language in their agreements and are increasing the rates in a very, uh, similar amount.
Got it. The final question, uh, it, the, the HFNH, uh, did we, we. They're outside consultant to review the contracts and so, uh. The, the cost, who bears the cost for that? Is that city of Pacific Grove? Is it shared by the partner agencies? Is it actually borne by GW? Are?
It's, it's shared by all the member agencies as well as the regional, um, waste management district.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, um. Mr. Schneider for excellent report. I just wanted to, um. Add in, I'm, in, what I'm reading is food scraps, uh, everything goes into that yard bin. Am I correct on that?
Correct. You've let the cat out of the bag. That is how we'll be collecting, uh, organic waste from, uh, curb side. Uh, through single-family, multi-family houses. Yes.
Okay, single-family, great. Um, it's those that have garbage disposers don't have to use them anymore, probably. Uh, but I think this is excellent, uh, especially with Thanksgiving coming up and there's so many. In the holidays, there's so many, uh, extra items to kind of get rid of and.
I will say with regards to the Thanksgiving, we need to pump the brakes. This is all for implementation in January first.
That's right.
Next Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Be able to, to, to utilize the greenways.
Mr. Schneider.
This Thanksgiving, you should put those food scraps in your trash can. You're not supposed to put them down the garbage disposal. Department will have some words with you about that.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Uh, well, any holidays coming up in the next year, we'll be able to use this. So, uh, and I appreciate the, uh, information, Mr. Snyder. Always grateful.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, thank you, Caleb, for this work. I know, uh, it took. A long time and I appreciate, um, your tenacity and I am very excited. Um, for our community to be, um, able to participate, um. With regards to just putting everything in, in the green, uh, waste bin and, um. So for me, um, I think we need to do everything that we can to mitigate, um, our runaway climate crisis. Um, with the wild wildfires and droughts, um, we're experiencing and have experienced. Over the last few years, you know, I mean, those are merely steps, um, along the way of. And this unfortunate, um, irreversible path. So I mean, really until the green premium is normalized. And reduced by demand, um, you know, we are going to have to spend a little extra money. And, and I was disappointed to see the errata. Um, initially I was very excited, I. To have such a minimum increase. It's still for me is a, a minimum increase and I do appreciate the cost being kept down. Um, I am though curious as far as outreach. Um. Or partnering with sustainable Pacific Grove or maybe everyone's harvest. What, you know, what does Pacific Grove have a plan yet? Um, obviously January one, you know, next week is Thanksgiving and we're going into the holidays. Um, so that's going to creep up on us rather quickly. Um, I did talk to, uh, Ms. Scholz. Uh, earlier this week and she was able to provide, um, a little bit of information, but I would love to, um. To share with the public just sort of as far as outreach. Um, and that goes what, what we have in the works. I know you've been working hard on that too.
Uh, just to kind of briefly touch on the outreach component of this, we're doing, you know, we've given this a lot of thought. We've been thinking about this for a whole year and. initially we were thinking, we got to spend the whole year doing outreach and getting everyone ready for this. But in part of the tack is we incorporate, you know, you know, city individuals, people from the waste management district, the actual haulers themselves, the people who see the trucks, people who are watching the trash come and go. And what we discovered was that there would be a significant operational issue if we kind of let the cat out of the bag too soon by doing all this outreach. And if we decided to do it for one jurisdiction, you know, for one city and not the other to do pilots, you know, the word gets out and then you get all this mixed and you get all this confusion. So what we're proposing is kind of a soft rollout. Now, with regards to the specifics of that campaign, that is something that Regional is working on specifically with green waste. As far as myself with regards to outreach, I have been in contact with Sustainable PG. I've told them it's coming, it's coming, you just gotta, just gotta wait. It's, it's just around the corner. But if there was more specifics that maybe Zoe could speak to, that would be great with regards to kind of the, the timeline in the next couple of months. Zoe, do you have any comments on that?
Sure. Thank you, Caleb, Mayor Council. Zoe Schultz with the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. We're excited to roll out this program to offer food scrap composting to residences. There will be a massive education effort underway and it's not going to all happen at once. So we'll be utilizing outreach through press, earned media, social media coordination. Also, hauler newsletters, newsletters that the sustainability groups pull out, put out and we have, we have a probably a soft rollout as Caleb is speaking of, but we'll be looking at ramping up efforts. Our main concern right now is to mitigate any contamination in the stream. So trying to make sure we have proper information about what our acceptance list is. And it will take time for the community to come on board and adopt this as a new habit in their lifestyle. So I imagine that'll be a a progressive change that people will be taking over the course of the, of the next couple of months or possibly a year. So we'll look to ramp up efforts throughout the year.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who collaborated and worked hard on this and I look forward to our annual update when, when you show the per capita of, of waste in each city. And so it will be neat over the next couple of years to gauge and, and, and hopefully see that decrease. I, I know that Pacific Grove is very eager and we have a lot of residents who are looking forward to this. So thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Cluddy.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, speaking to the red line document, I'm always it always, I get a little apprehensive when I see a red line document with a lot of red in it showing up on the same day as the council meeting. And also, the proposed resolution wasn't attached to the original agenda report. I don't know why that is, but let's, let's go and talk about what the red lines actually represent and why. So initially, the proposed rate increase was going to be two point five four percent. Now it's five point oh seven. Is that basically just because the well, explain why, what the exact difference is and why, why they've been made, the changes have been made. Mr. Schneider, please.
I, yes, Ms. Councilmember Coletti to the mayor. I, I have to say it was a, just a simple mathematical error with regards to the rate in the discussions and everything with regards to the costs. A number was come up that, oh, there needs to be what originally was five point zero seven percent for the whole year. And through, you know, anyone who's, you know, crunch those numbers says, okay, that's for the whole year. It might make sense you cut that in half because it's only for six months. It's from January through June. And that was an error on HF and H's part when they were discussing with us. They caught their error and they brought it to my attention. Unfortunately, they brought it to my attention while I was away. So I didn't see that error. I didn't see that correction until yesterday, fairly late in the day. And that is the reason why the, the rate was updated so late. And then also why a redlined version of the agreement was, was sent out so late. So that, that is just a you know, it's an oversight, yes, and it was unfortunate the timing with my, you know, being away from the office. So that's the reason for that coming up so late. And, you know, for that, I apologize.
No, yeah, thank you for owning that and, and, and telling us what it is. So my understanding then is so i- if I'm looking at this correctly, it says the additional rate increase will be four dollars and eighty-five cents a quarter or nineteen forty a year, nineteen dollars and forty cents a year. So that was always going to be the increase. It just got misrepresented as a percentage. Is that right?
Correct. Yes. Operation or order of operations. I was a math tutor in college and, you know, I'm guilty, but still to this day of violating the order of operations, which you know, can happen to the best of us.
Please excuse my dear Aunt Sally. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, one thing that I, I did want to look at, I always like looking at the, the financials. I will, I will just note here and maybe we can get an update on this. Attachment to clarification of contractors' compensation allowable SB thirteen eighty-three costs. The actual table is cut off. Maybe because it, this document wasn't, it was, wasn't, at least this page wasn't printed in landscape mode, but we're only getting half of the data on this particular table. So I would like to see council get that complete table sent to them and maybe even have this updated as a second errata so that the public will know as well exactly what the cost analysis is.
Yeah, I'm sorry for that technical error there. Yeah. And in my version, I'm looking at here, it's, it's all on one page. But yes, I could see how somewhere in the process, it could have been cut off because it was input as an image.
Yeah, I'm just taking this right from the, the errata sheet on the city council's agenda page.
Well, if I'm, if I may, Councilmember McCleady, the, the same document was in the original agenda report attachment. So that sheet is, is still available, but yes, I could understand the confusion that with the updated document, it should have as clear as the original.
Well, Caleb, thank you for all the help and thank you for all the work you've done for the city. I appreciate it. We appreciate it and happy trails and thanks for this report.
I also want to add my best wishes to you, Caleb, on your new life in Oregon and hope that all goes well. We've had, as you've brought to council, a flurry of documents. In particular, about third, SB thirteen eighty-three and rate increases. Now, I want to get a little better understanding of how these come to us. So I'll start with a simple question. So this amendment that you have before us for council to approve, who wrote it?
The amendment itself, it is provided by HF and H. And then through me, I do minor editing just to update the specifics to our like with our code, inputting some of the code, inputting the, you know, city manager's name, that sort of thing. And then it's reviewed by the legal department.
So I see we have Mr. Hilton on our Zoom call. Welcome, Mr. Hilton. So interesting. So he wrote it. Was there any vetting by? Anyone else? Did this agreement, was this agreement approved by the Monterey Regional Waste Management District?
Similar agreements have been approved by a number of the other jurisdictions that work with as part of the Monterey Regional, Monterey Regional Waste Management District. Yes.
Did it go before the board, Board of Directors?
I'm thinking about the individual, not the, not the board. The board has seen some of this, sorry, rather the district and the member agencies at the tack. All of this has been distributed to them. They've all seen this.
Okay, so Mr. Hilton, so you write this agreement or in this case the amendment and then you distribute this to the tack, but the tack doesn't approve it. It's written up for individual agencies. So the Waste Management District Board of Directors never approves this and the tack never approves it. It's just sliced up for individual cities and sent out. Is that correct? Okay, the Waste Management District has an attorney. I think it's Rob Wellington. Has he looked at this?
He has, but not as part of his role as the MRWMD's attorney. He's the attorney for some of the special districts and so he's reviewed it in that capacity. The Waste Management District Board is not a party to your franchise agreement. The Waste Management District itself isn't a party to your franchise agreement. It's a bilateral agreement between you and Green Waste Recovery. And so while we've worked with the tack group in preparing the amendment, all of the terms were negotiated with the tack in the room with us. You know, and, and worked through the executive committee of the chat tack to review all of the mitigations that were identified in the assignment review process. So it, it has gone through a lot of vetting, but because none of your individual agencies have full-time solid waste staff, you use us as your outside consultants and have for the last several years to manage these documents.
So it's, it's you that actually determines what the cost is for Pacific Grove residents. Is that correct?
It's, there is a rate application prepared by the company's controllers that is reviewed by our CPAs and our financial analysts. They do due diligence through the company's books, review their payroll records, their fuel records, things like that. Tonnage records at the waste management district to make sure that the amount of material they're charging us for is the amount of material that's been received by jurisdiction. So there's a number of hands in the pot to, to do the verification, but the rate application is prepared by the company and then the due diligence review is performed by us with support from member agency staff and MRWMD staff.
So, so you're here to tell us that these numbers are, are good, that they're accurate and they comply with the city's agreement with Green Waste Recovery?
Yes. And in fact, we were able to, as you saw in the staff report, we were able to negotiate a number of concessions in order to get this approved before the end of the year. For example, the forgiveness of the COVID-related costs and revenue losses that Green Waste experienced during the downturn, they were willing to, to forego those rate requests in exchange for the consideration that you're making tonight.
So as part of the negotiating process, Mr. Schneider, you're, I assume you're one of our, you're Pacific Grove's negotiator and does the tack then vote?
No.
Do you get one vote as part of your negotiating duties?
No, the tack does not make any decisions. We basically are a sounding board for each of the parties to the solid waste collection on the peninsula. So it, it's not even, it's not just green waste who's part of the tack. It's also the Monterey, the company that handles the trash from Monterey. It's waste management because they still work inside the county. We're basically all getting together saying, here's a new law. It needs to be implemented. How do we implement it? How do we go about doing this? We bounce ideas back and forth. All of us who are bright-eyed and bushy-tailed say, we've got to get the message out now. And then we have discussions with the handlers. They say, that's not going to work out. We say, well, can we try collecting stuff this way? They say, well, it could work, but if you did that, you'd have to do this. Oh, that sounds expensive. So there's a lot of back and forth in the tactic to gain a full understanding of how this is going to actually impact the residents. And then we kind of settle on, okay, what is the, the best way forward? What is it we would need to accomplish to have something that is actually effective for our constituents? And then at that point, Green Waste then has a better understanding or all the, the haulers themselves have a better understanding of, okay, this is what you're wanting to have happen in order to implement it. And they come back and basically say, this is what it would take to make that happen. We have some more back and forth, you know, is this exactly needed? Well, you know, this, you know, this we, you know, elected to have earlier on, so we don't really need a full-time this here. You know, is this truck the right kind of truck for the job? Do you really think you need to have, you know, this many drivers to do X, Y, Z? So there is a, a back and forth. And then once we really kind of got it in the, in the ballpark, that's where HF and H really comes in and we've all agreed, this is how we're we, we think the best way to move forward. So if this is the best way to move forward, what's it going to cost? And then HF and H says, okay, those costs look reasonable. And then that, that's when I bring it forward to the council to actually make a decision whether or not to move forward.
I thank you for that explanation. So, so all this back and forth happens in the tack for those that are listening, the Technical Advisory Committee of which you represent, your Pacific Grove's manager.
Correct.
On tack. Well, I appreciate all the explanation. I, considering that it involves all these entities and as Mr. Rob Hilton described that the cities don't have waste management experts full-time certainly, but the Waste Management District does. Ms. Schultz, Schultz is on the line here. I would very much encourage the tack to take these documents to the Waste Management District Board of Directors because the board certainly has a deeper understanding of what's going on and get their input, if not blessing, before it comes to, to us. And yeah, that's my recommendation. Aside from that, this is SB thirteen eighty-three. We need to do it. It's a good thing. But we're moving forward. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tempore Smith.
I'd like to make a motion, Your Honor, if you're, if you're ready. I just, I would move the recommendation so I don't have to read all those lines. I, it's probably clearer if I just move approval of the recommended action tonight. Second.
And the recommendation, the recommended action, the motion is on the errata. Let's get a page just to make sure everybody is clear.
That, that sounds like a good idea, Your Honor, if it's on the errata.
If I may, Mayor, let me bring that up for you and I'll share my screen. There it goes. Is that sufficient? Do you, do you see there?
I, I thought, wait, wasn't there another another recommendation tacked onto the bottom or?
I, I think in the errata, it was, the last item was brought in as item number five versus where on my screen it was, it was listed separately where it said, and approve a resolution.
Okay, so this contains all five.
All five items, correct.
And the two makers of the motion, you're in agreement?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
All right, maybe, maybe we have a vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Hi.
Councilmember Emilio.
Hi.
Councilmembers Coletti. Councilmember Coletti.
Oh, you've unmuted too quickly. Hi.
Thank you. Councilmembers McAdams.
Hi.
Pedori.
Hi.
Tomlinson. Mayor P.
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And I just want to, and I thank everyone else on the Thank you. And I just want to, and I thank everyone else on the, uh, Zoom meeting. Uh, for being here. Just to confirm the five percent, uh, rate increase. Will, when will, uh, residents and businesses. See that rate increase?
Uh, Your Honor, that, uh, will take effect on January first. Of twenty twenty-two.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And it's now eight o'clock. Time for a short break. Any objections? I move that, uh, we, uh. Take a break, uh, return at eight twenty. We'll start in just a minute. We're waiting for Councilmember McAdams who will make the presentation. The former. Item twelve A Inclusionary Housing Ordinance is next. Well, it looks like, uh, as I'm the co-author, I'm gonna pinch hit here on the presentation. Uh, Ms. Kendall, um, did I impose upon you to put up, uh, first slide?
There you go, sir.
Okay. And. Oh, there's Councilmember McAdams. Welcome back. Okay.
Thank you.
Queued it up for you.
Thank you so much. Um, so what is here before the council this evening? Um, is a conceptual discussion. About an inclusionary housing ordinance. Um, and before we go any further, uh, the mayor and I, uh, we sat on the. Um, Housing Advisory Committee with, uh, several. Uh, residents. We had a lot of the business community. Um, we had representatives from nonprofits, uh, the Monterey Bay Aquarium. Um, and really, uh, through our process with. Uh, Barrett and Driscoll, who were the consultants. Um, we did a lot of community engagement. We had a couple of. Uh, joint meetings with the Planning Commission. Uh, and that was with, uh, both City Council, uh, and the Housing Advisory. Um, and so we really. Think the process was. A little over a year. And so. Where it concluded is that, um, and we also have on our website, you can, uh, look up. The Welcome Home Housing Initiative. Uh, so there's lots of information. And, uh, what we ended up with is, uh, a nice, uh, report. Uh, which had several of, um, the recommendations. And sort of laid out the work. So, um, as we all know. Uh, our City Council Goal Number Six is Increase Affordable Housing. Determine Policies, Projects, and Programs. That will advance the effort to create new affordable housing in the city of Pacific Grove. Um, so in the housing strategies, uh, in the final document, and I did speak about the. Tons of engagement that was done. Uh, next slide, please. So within the, the final outcome, there were different. Actions that could be taken. And, uh, one of the midterm, so we had short-term, midterm, long-term. A midterm action, item three A was develop. An inclusionary zoning policy. Or inclusionary housing policy. So affordable housing policies, uh, typically require the developer. Um, of the projects to either build, uh, a percentage, uh, allocation. Of affordable housing, or they would pay and in lieu fee. Um, which there's a process to determine, uh, what that fee would be. And the fee would be different for every city. Uh, and that would go into an affordable housing fund. Uh, lots of local cities already have this. In place, uh, City of Monterey, City of Seaside, City of Marina, and City of Salinas. The next slide, please. So the recommendation, again, we're gonna have a conceptual conversation. Uh, and direct the city manager to turn, return with the draft. Inclusionary Housing Ordinance for Council Review, uh, by March twenty twenty-two. And that's it.
We'll now go out to public for a public comment.
Jane Haynes, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening. Happy Thanksgiving. Um, unless there are aspects of this that I don't know about, uh, I am really opposed to this. I just don't think it makes sense. Pacific Grove. I can understand why. Marina and Seaside and the county would want an inclusionary housing ordinance and they have all that land at Fort Ord to develop. But in Pacific Grove, I don't think, I, I think it's actually gonna be harmful. Um, the way an inclusionary housing ordinance works is they're usually, it's usually based on about six houses. Five are sold at my market rate. The six is affordable. The way the six is affordable is those other five have to subsidize it. So you're increasing the cost of five houses to lower the cost of the six house. And, um, it's. You, you're only producing usually about one out of every six houses that you build will become affordable. The other five will be. Increased in cost. And in Pacific Grove where we don't have, and it has to be by a single developer doing a unit of five or more houses. In Pacific Grove, it just doesn't make sense to me. We don't have developers doing that and. And. It just. That what I sent you today attached to the email I sent you was a strong recommendation to do a feasibility study. Before you, uh, uh, adopt an affordable, uh, a, uh, an inclusionary housing policy. And as far as I know, we haven't done a feasibility study and I believe that once somebody looked at the small amount of land that's up for development in the city. That the feasibility study would say this makes no sense. Um, the, now, uh, there may be things I don't know about. Maybe there's been a feasibility study that I don't know about. Or if you, on your housing committee, you have Jan Lindenthal. She is, was the director of that very successful. Lover's Point Senior Housing Unit. She knows a lot about affordable housing. If she's behind this, I changed my whole position and I, I would go with whatever she would recommend. But unless you have someone like that who's knowledgeable about affordable housing. I just think that this just makes no sense at all for Pacific Grove. So, um, I, i- if there's something more that I don't know, please tell me, but. Based on what I know, I just think that what this would do is raise the. The, the cost of many houses in Pacific Grove and it would lower the, in order to lower the cost for others. So. I'm opposed to it. Based on what I do know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I guess I understand inclusionary housing very differently than the previous speaker. Um, I consider it, uh, like when a multi-unit. Apartment built, you know, apartments are put up, that at least one of them is in affordable. Um, I do not think, we can't, Pacific Grove can't just. It's getting wider and wider and a leader and a leader. And I, I don't think we can afford to put more million-dollar condos anywhere. All around us without some form of inclusionary housing. Our diversity is going by the wayside. Um, so unless my understanding of this completely skewed, I don't think we're gonna get any. In apartment buildings or anything else unless we have some sort of inclusionary housing ordinance on the books. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, no other cancer base, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council discussion. Councilmember Paduri.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate, uh, um, you and Councilmember McAdam bringing this to. The table. Um, before I comment, I would like to call upon our resident staff expert, Ms. Wyatt. Uh, I do want her to comment on not only this item, but really what we are doing to help shape, uh. Pacific Grove's future with respect to not only inclusionary housing, but green numbers as well.
Uh, good evening. Council, uh, Mayor Peak, I, I'm so excited to be here to talk about. This really important subject, uh, and how do we get more affordability into Pacific Grove and is inclusionary housing? Uh, and getting, uh, an ordinance completed by March possible? Uh, I want to first start out with some background. I, I have been involved in. Inclusionary housing updates with the city of Salinas and with the county of Monterey. And, uh, I did speak with our attorney at BBK, Michael Mara, who you heard from when we did our housing study session just a couple of weeks ago. And a housing impact fee. That is being proposed in an inclusionary ordinance. That would impose fees or have land use implications such would require both a feasibility analysis and a nexus study. So in order to do this legally, it is required by state law that. These analyses would be conducted in order to have any housing impact fees. So that would require conducting an RFP. For consultant to come on board to be able to ensure that. We have the right analysis done to impose such a fee. So there has to be that nexus. And also these fees are really important or these, these studies in a, in feasibility analysis is super important to determine. How feasible is this for the community? And is it possible? So of course, these analyses and. They cost some money, right? So we're looking at about seventy-five thousand minimum. To about probably a hundred and fifty thousand just to do the analysis. And then you also need an additional amount of money to write the ordinance and, um, make sure everything is legal. So I will say too, that a lot of. The studies are based on market conditions. And so I want to. Take you back a little bit to when I was updating the Salinas. Uh, Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And when we went through that process, we had just gone through, through the crazy market. Issues of two thousand and six. And in that timeframe, the. The analysis was done when the market was crazy high. Sort of like the conditions we're experiencing now. And when we came in to do the new analysis, because you do need to update your impact. Analysis, your nexus study, your feasibility analysis, probably reasonably every five years. So this is something that we really need to consider, uh, as a tool for affordability within the city. With all of these requirements to ensure we, we go through it in the right way. The other, the other thing we did do in that, that process. Uh, is we had a really great steering committee that involved. All the local developers. We had Chispa, we had EA, or we had, uh, Eden Housing involved. We had nonprofit, for-profit housing developers. To weigh in to ensure that the feasibility analysis was, was. Stood its ground, because if it doesn't, then every time a new development comes forward. It'll come, the, the developers will say, it's not feasible for us to build these affordable units, especially when it comes to the deeper affordable units such as. Low, lower than moderate income. And you really need that, that good feasibility analysis so we can stand our ground and say, no, we, we went through the process. You know, we, we had a stakeholder engagement directly with developers to ensure that. Developers are on board with the fees, because if they're not on board with the fees and. They don't agree, then we won't get any affordability and everything will come to a stalemate and you won't have development. So. These are some of the pitfalls and I've been through. I've been through a couple of rounds of this and, and I'll say when I was at the county also. We were updating the ordinance as well. We went through the, the feasibility analysis, same thing. Um, and all developers just kept saying, no, this is not feasible for us. And, and when it came down to coming to the board with developments and trying to. Enforce the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. We never got anything below, uh, above market rate units. They kept saying it's unfeasible, it's unfeasible. So if, if I were to go through this process. Would really need to be a process where we involve the stakeholders, we involve the developers, we involve the nonprofit housing developers, we all work together. To have a very strong inclusionary housing ordinance, to have a very strong backbone, which would be that feasibility analysis, the nexus study. I would also like to say. That looking at, uh, the Welcome Home Plan, which I was engaged in and, um, had a lot of great conversations with. Uh, our, our consultants during the process. This is a midterm action that was, that was, uh, designated in that Welcome Home Study. There are other actions that I think right now, when I'm looking at inclusionary versus some of the great new housing legislation that we heard about a couple of weeks ago. In our housing study session. There are new tools that could yield us many more units and much more affordability and deeper affordability because this. Because the state is super hyper-focused on less than sixty percent area median income development. And a lot of the new tools that we're seeing such as a density bonus and SB thirty-five. Those can really help us yield additional affordability and deeper affordability, which is really what we want to get at. That's what we would want to get at in inclusionary ordinance too. So I did run some analysis, I just want to say with the RENA numbers. And in order to meet the proposed RENA that we've been allocated so far, it's not final. The RENA process is not final. There were four hundred and fifty-one units allocated so far to Pacific Grove. And many of those are in the lower income category. So we really want to focus on how can we truly get to this deeper affordability? So I did some analysis on my own here to kind of look at, well, with these new tools that we're talking about, the SB thirty-five density bonus, how many units would it take to yield these more affordable units? Density bonus is incredible because we can get, if you, if you have a hundred percent affordable development and most of those units, I think about eighty percent need to be sixty percent AMI or less. You can get all of your units in one development. Or you can incentivize with a developer, say it's a four hundred unit development and they want to do fifty percent above mod and fifty percent below moderate. We could get in one development of, say, a hundred units, fifty, fifty of those units would be affordable. And I'm sorry, I can't show you all this in graphics, but I'm trying to explain it. I hope it, I hope it's somewhat clear here. And I do have tables and all this information I can provide to anyone who needs it. But if we were looking at inclusionary housing just to meet, so I, the analysis I did with a density bonus, we could get to all of our arena objectives with seven hundred and eighty-one new units with, with just some hypothetical figures. On the inclusionary zoning side, which is a little more concrete because density bonus is dependent on how much affordability is proposed in the project and so forth. Inclusionary zoning, I just took the counties, as you know, per your staff report, you had mentioned the county Salinas. And most of, most of these are, are local jurisdictions go to a twenty percent inclusionary requirement. And in those other, so let's take the county, six percent very low income unit, six percent low, and then eight percent moderate. It would take us five thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven units to get to the same levels of affordability as density bonus. So back to your Welcome Home Strategy, our wonderful Welcome Home Strategy. Some of the near-term actions were adopt an affordable housing density bonus and parking standard changes. And adopt objective standards and streamline reviews. And I would also like to look at some of these priority sites that you, that have been identified through the Welcome Home Strategy process and seeing how can we upzone? How can we increase density and utilize some of these great new tools the state has given us to get more affordability and deeper affordability for people who really need this deeper affordability? I think that focusing back to the Welcome Home Strategy, those near-term actions, accomplishing some of those along with the RENA process that is going on. And, and then coming back and saying, okay, we, we've upzoned. We've, we've created space to, to increase as much affordability as possible within the community. Now we've done that, let's now look at the next step. And is, is an inclusionary ordinance appropriate at this time? So that is my recommendation. I do not, I do not believe we could get there, we could have an ordinance by March twenty twenty-two. So because of, we need to hire consultants, we need to have a proper feasibility analysis. And I will, just going back to my time in Salinas, we went through negotiations with our, our stakeholder group for over a year. And we came to the council, everybody was unhappy. And we, they pushed us back for several more meetings. And I will say, you know, that late Alfred Diaz Infante was one of the biggest helps in that, that process. He's with Chispa Housing. And we somehow, a few more meetings, a few months later, we got there. We got to a point where everybody could live with it. So it's, that's typically the process. We want everyone to have buy-in. And we want to make sure that we have a backbone to stand on. We have that legal, legal standing to enforce any type of, uh, uh, a fee. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. And can I just say whatever she said? Because you're, there's a lot there. The, the, the thing that I wanted to mention was, there are a lot of variables here. We're, we're lower working with SB nine, for instance, there's SB thirty-five. There's this increased density bonus. There is also like inclusionary housing. And I, I, I feel that we should direct the staff to come up with the, with the recommendation for what we need to do for inclusionary housing. Especially because there are really a lot of variables. And I, I can't, between all those variables, I don't even know what the priorities are. Is this ordinance a priority or is it something else? Plus, the RENA numbers are not yet finalized. We're, I mean, I know that's four hundred plus, et cetera, but who knows what, what the final number is. So my, my recommendation at this point is to direct staff to come up with, with what we need to do next, especially for inclusionary housing or otherwise. Thank you.
I'm gonna jump, jump in here. Thank you very much, Ms. Wyatt, for all the, the explanations. A couple of random questions. First of all, we've had a density bonus on the books. The state has had a density bonus for years. I think we got one of, one affordable housing residential unit out of that. Is there some reason to believe that it's gonna work in Pacific Grove in the future? Any, any idea why it hasn't yielded results to date?
Density bonus?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I think that rezoning sites, which is really a critical component and what we're looking at with our housing element. And that was something that was also brought up in the Welcome Home Strategy that we really need to, to focus in and hone in on some of those key sites that you all went through and identified and, and determine, okay, these sites could yield us units. And so I, I definitely think density bonus in twenty seventeen, really with that passage of housing laws just came really into effect. So it's, it's new, right? We've got all these new tools. Inclusionary housing has been around for quite some time. So, uh, but density bonus is, is newer. And I think that it could work in the city of Pacific Grove easily on the right site.
That's interesting comment. So the density bonus in, I wasn't aware, two thousand and seventeen, so four years. And you said that's new. So these changes in code, upzoning, density bonus, relaxing parking requirements. If four years is new, then we're probably talking about, what, ten years from now? We pass the law and something's gonna happen. You know, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years from now. Is that, that's what I'm referring.
I don't think, I think if we're, if we have the right, working with developers, we have the right sites. I mean, we just look at Mission Linen as being annexed. There's possibilities there. You need to have a lot of the right. It depends how hard we work, right? There are a lot of factors into it, just like there are with inclusionary housing as well. So I would say that, and, and there were also in this round of legislation, additional additional incentives processed with the density bonus guidelines. So we can get now more units and more affordability. So things are changing quite rapidly.
And my last question, I'll let someone else talk to. What, what is happening now in terms of Barrett and Driscoll and the Welcome Homes strategy? Are they, are they still working for us right now?
Yes, we meet weekly and we have talked about, especially when we were prepping for our housing study session. We talked about what are the most effective strategies that we can employ short term? And meeting those Welcome Home Goals and those were some of the near-term actions. So we are definitely, and, and in preparation for the housing element, looking at sites that we can upzone that would meet these, these, that would really be able to affect new affordable units within the city.
Okay, well, I had a few more questions. But anyhow, housing element, that's twenty twenty-three. Just to get everybody acclimated to the right timeframe, right? Twenty twenty-three.
Right.
For the housing element. Okay, Mayor Pro Tempore Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I, I feel that I'm kind of in, in the same idea mode as Chaps, as Councilmember Bedore. I actually don't, I don't think that this item is ready for action here. I think that, you know, after hearing from staff on the issue, I feel that we need to study what it is, what would be the best thing to do rather than, so I definitely am not ready to support an ordinance or the creation of an ordinance. And it seems to me that the feasibility analysis, that's a development fee issue. That, that, I mean, that's like a threshold issue. You can't even do it without that. So that's problematic. So I, I couldn't support it on that basis alone. But, and then, then you get to the question of, well, how do you feel about spending that type of money on it? I, I'm not ready to support that until we do, we have staff take a look at it and kind of prioritize not just inclusionary housing. I would say direct staff to, you know, create a priority on what would be the best options to increase affordable housing. I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit it to inclusionary housing. It just seems to me like, especially with all the development fee and legal issues involved, I think it needs more study before it's ready. Thanks.
Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember McAdams, for bringing this and having having the discussion. I, well, first off, I've mentioned key sites mentioned. I want to mention, you know, it, it's important to remember that some of these key sites don't have water. So we've got to be realistic in our plans. And we have to, you know, this is coming up on a lot of different fronts in the city. We have to understand the cease and desist order and certainly abide by it. And that includes the water entitlement that came out of the Pacific Grove local water project that has funding restrictions on, uh, on the water that is, uh, that came about through the entitlement. What I, what I kind of like about this concept and, and wanting to pursue it some more is, I don't want to see twenty-five luxury condominiums get approved like they got in, in, at the Holman's Building and not get one single unit. Market rate, whatever you want to call it. We got nothing out of that. So what can we do to prevent that or to help make sure that that never occurs again? Seems to me like an ordinance is the appropriate way to answer that question. But let's have a further discussion about that. I'll also point out, and I'm following up on what the mayor said earlier. In our zoning code under twenty, chapter twenty-three dot seven-nine, we have density bonus regulations established. Now, this ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. Maybe the first thing we could do is do an update to this density bonus chapter. Again, chapter twenty-three dot seven-nine and bring it up to date as far as some of the, uh, some of the new state legislation that's been adopted. I I, I would also like this, every time we top, think about, you know, inclusionary housing or, you know, affordable housing, a lot of the time that, that discussion kind of gets cast into new development. But I'd also like us, as a city, I'd like us to start contemplating, hey, maybe, maybe that just means buying a multi-unit apartment complex and dedicating those units to be affordable. I think that's a cheaper alternative in a lot of different ways and it's existing structures. It's an existing structure. So I, I don't hear that often enough, in my opinion. So I, I'd like to widen our gaze as far as what these housing developments can look like. Maybe it just means purchasing existing one. So there is the problem with water. We do have a meter moratorium. I would like to see how we can get fees or some kind of in lieu fee process established so that something like the Holman's Project does not end up, you know, basically passing us by. So, um, and, and to the mayor's point, where are we now with the, with Barrett and Driscoll? Are, when are we wrapping that, that initial housing initiative up? I'd like to, I'd like to kind of get an update on that. And I know that they've pointed to some of the, the results that'll come out of that initiative. And I think it's been a great initiative. But I'd like to know, I'd like to know a little bit more about what that schedule's looking like. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Ms. Wyatt, I really appreciate all the information you provided. I was trying to take as many notes as possible, but I'm not a speed writer, but so, so some of the themes have been said already. It sounds to me like a feasibility study is the first step from what I gather. But I also would say that what should be done is that the staff come back with, these are ways of affordable housing or maybe we need to feasibility, feasibility study, kind of a step-by-step process. And I do appreciate Jenny Mayer and McAdams, Councilmember McAdams, bringing this forward because it's a great discussion. But I do believe that the staff needs to come back to us. I think there's too many open-ended questions and that may help us focus our discussion when they come back with some, these are some of the steps that need to be done. That's my recommendation.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for their comments. And thank you, Ms. Wyatt, for your knowledge. You know, I really appreciate this dialogue. And, you know, I think for me, the, the final strategy is dated, you know, June twenty twenty-one and it's now November. And so I, I think maybe, I, I think what I'm hearing and, and perhaps what, what I would like to see is exactly what my colleagues are saying. It's like, okay, what are we doing? I don't want this report and all this work to just be put away on the shelf. And so I do think that we have taken some steps where we have been very aggressive with our ADU program. Is that turning into rentals? I don't know, because we don't have that information. I don't think that our ADU program is set up in a way that is really encouraging and making Our ADU program is set up in a way that is really encouraging and making the homeowners commit. To renting out the units versus expanding their home or having a nice guest house. Uh, for their visitors and family, so you know, perhaps there's some steps that we can do. Or at least have some initial data. Uh, and follow up on the, I believe we've had thirty eight ADUs. Barely recently, so how are we tracking what's happening with those? You know, they're using our affordable water allocation, our affordable housing, water allocation. For ADUs, so if that's the case, then. Are they affordable units? You know, we don't know, so I I definitely think that that's. Something else that we can look at. Um, to promote affordable housing, but I know for the. Both the mayor and I have been talking about an inclusionary housing ordinance for. A couple of years, and I think that this is the first time. You know, that we have heard. And the public has heard, like, really, the, the um, the amount of work that they take and the and the expense, so. I really appreciate that. Um, I I had no idea, and so that's very helpful, so. Um, I would absolutely, you know, be delighted for staff to come back with some. Um, suggestions of, you know, this is what we already have in place, this is what we can modify, I know we've also done work. Um, with regards to our parking restrictions and and we have um. Uh, been lenient with those and changed our zoning ordinance. So obviously, I would love to do more. And see more happen, and please, you know, Anastasia, however, that council can support you, I I think all of us are really. Um, wanting to to keep going in this in this right direction, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, um. I I just wanted to add my support, I I I'm pretty sure most people know that I I definitely support the. This concept as well, and I I agree that, you know, maybe in the past, not in the too distant past, um. This wasn't a hot or top priority for all of council, but. I really do believe that it is now, I appreciate the subcommittee and the time that you took and the community outreach and all the involvement that is taking place. And and big time to staff uh for leading the process, so it sounds to me like Anastasia has. You know, absolute expertise and experience in this area. Um, I would like to recommend that she come back in Q one of twenty twenty two. With uh her strategy recommendations. Uh, from the document that, you know, she's already working from, and maybe it what I kind of heard from Councilmember McAdams, and I agree with this is. Uh, as part of that. Coming back and include anything that has already been done in the last couple of years and how it's going from kind of a tracking perspective. Um, so that as we go forward and implement. Tactics, if you will, off of the strategy document. Uh, that we are also getting that feedback and ensuring. Um, you know, how, how was the water allocated to actual inclusionary? You know, uh, ADUs or affordable ADUs. Um, how, how are the strategies working, basically, because we have, we have adopted a few and I look forward to um. Uh, supporting and adopting more uh that staff brings forward, so. Uh, I just wanted to add my support and I. I think, you know, the goal tonight was to have a a discussion, which certainly has happened. Um, I wouldn't direct the city manager to write an ordinance yet at this point, I would direct staff to come back with. A list of strategies to work from. And recommendations. Thank you, Mayor.
And I I think that uh I'll, I'll try to sum up what what I'm hearing. And certainly will put on the. Um, put off to the side. This uh recommendation for an inclusionary housing right now. But what I'm hearing. From council is certainly support, more support for adding affordable housing and doing something. And um, uh, Councilmember Emilio said, well, let's, you know, step by step, I think I heard. Uh, Councilmembers McAdams and Tomlinson as well, it's to come back. And tell us. What uh, what can we do? What can we do now? I, I speak for myself, Barrett and Driscoll has been working on this for quite a while. And when they started saying, well, you know, we need, you know, a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do more studies and. And more. Uh, we have to think about this priorities and strategies on. I begin to wonder if we're ever going to really get off the dime. And uh, do start, start working. The uh, the tools or the actions that are necessary to add affordable housing, so. Yeah, I totally endorse. Coming back to council. With some. Uh, recommendations and we won't, we won't know which ones are the best. Or perfect. Certainly won't know that, but we need to try, we need to start. Uh, being proactive and. Maybe dial back on some of the studies. That's my thought. Anyone else? Is Wyatt? Um, you've got some direction, well, it's through the, through the city manager, of course. Is that uh? Uh, what you heard is. That sort of coalesce? Mr. Harvey?
Uh, ye- yes, Mayor, it sounds like um, we'll come back to the council, we had a great discussion and like everybody indicated, we have a great resource on staff now in this Wyatt, so. Uh, and we have a document to to work from as well, so more to come.
Okay. Uh, we'll now move on to. The former item, uh, let's see. Eight A. Which is, yeah, A A, which is. Check register report. Ms. Candell, I'll ask you. Are we on track here?
Yes, sir, that's our, our next item.
Okay. Mary Legasca, welcome.
Thank you, um, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and the public. Um, I have a short report for tonight. Um, the check register is a detailed account of our monthly expenditures. It provides budgetary insight and promotes transparency. And the check register is uh produced from the city's financial system. And the report groups the checks by the city fund and vendor. Um, the report includes the check number, the check issue date, the name of the vendor, a description of the purchase and amount of the check. Um, the monthly totals are provided on the last page of the report, so that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Will now go off for comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Debbie Beck, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, um, thank you for allowing me to pull this item as well, um, I requested the check register be pulled due to the amount of water cost. Our taxpayers have paid to Cal Am water, mostly for irrigation. In reviewing the check register in your current agenda in front of you, our taxpayers have paid over forty seven thousand dollars to Cal Am water for the month of September. And over fifteen thousand was charged just for Berwick Park irrigation. I was able to review eight of the past ten months of check registers and our taxpayers. Have paid over two hundred and eighty five thousand dollars to Cal Am, if we continue at this pace, year end will be over four hundred thousand dollars to Cal Am. During the eight months, taxpayers have paid fifty four thousand to Berwick for irrigation and well over a hundred thousand for both Berwick and Jewel Park. These large charges stand out for obvious reasons. Have we considered rain sensors, checking timers on sprinkler systems, possibly non-potable water? And how often do we have Cal Am check on our meters for leaks? I would like to request the council look into the water charges as a start and have some oversight to the checkbook register regarding the Cal Am fees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Boy, I was looking at the check register and that really stuck out with me too, here we have a local water project with non-potable water. Ready for use in irrigating the, you know, the cemetery and the golf course, and yet we are not utilizing that. All that money spent with Cal Am, it seems to me, too. Would pay for some other irrigation pri- pri- uh, pipes to some more infrastructure. Actually use that water for other. Parks and irrigation. And I don't know how many times they fill the water truck, but that's. I'm, I'm curious about that too, to actually go out and spray with water that way and manually do it. And I have another question, and that is. How, what is council policy on sending people to these conferences? We have a delegate that we. Voted, the council voted to pay her way to go up to Sacramento to the California League of Cities. Paid her expenses or registration and everything. And then we had two other council members go up there and have all of their expenses paid also. But I don't think any of that was authorized by council. So I wonder what the policy is on these tag-alongs that I would call them, because they're not paying their expenses. They're charging the city for the full registration, the hotel rooms, the transportation, the meals, everything, so. One member turned into like over five thousand dollars for the expenses of three. That were up there, so I just really, really wonder. What? The goal and the council policy is, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now their hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
Come back to council discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, well, I uh. I do think the check register is a useful tool. I uh, and I did notice the fifteen thousand dollars of water charges, I actually. Sent Ms. Hannah, is, is Director Hannah available?
Yes, I am present.
Okay, uh, Director Hannah, can you basically answer the question about the fifteen thousand dollars?
I, I believe if I recall correctly, that was for two months. Of um, of of water usage, uh, sometimes we may get some bills. Late and we may be paying on twice on one check maybe for two invoices.
And that's the case here, is that right?
That particular one, yes.
Okay, so there was about eight thousand dollars in water charges for September and about seven thousand dollars for in October. For that particular. Location, Berwick Park. So I guess. The caller uh raises an interesting point about audits. When's the last time the city performed an audit? Uh, regarding uh its utility charges. Take Cal Am as an example. Do you have any idea of that?
Councilmember Coletti, are you referring to like actually? When you say audit?
Well, to see if the, what the water usage actually is, maybe there's a leak, you know, uh. When I see a large uh, uh, bill. From Cal Am, I automatically think, oh, I've left something running. So audit would be basically a match between what we're getting billed for and what we think we really should be using.
I I would look from a consumption standpoint to the Public Works Director.
Hmm, okay. Mr. Go.
As Councilmember Coletti through the mayor. Um, when you did raise this concern with the check register, I did send staff out to do a check of our system. The system does not have any leaks that are noticeable. They're all valve. So unless the system's on, you're not going to have a leak that's consistently flowing, it's a large turf area. The cost of potable water to irrigate these locations is expensive, as we all know. We do have rain sensors that we've worked with Cal Am and installed. By three to four years ago on all of our systems. With that being said, it doesn't mean that I cannot reach out to Cal Am, which I will do to make sure that we're on. The best tiered system we can get for these locations, which I already believe we are. Pretty consistent, we've seen this amount. On other check registers. Um, this is what it costs to keep our oceanfront parks. Vibrant and green.
Okay, so that system, that particular system is not a timer, that actually requires someone to turn a valve. Is that right?
No, sir, that it's all timer.
Oh, okay.
And efficient, yes, that is correct.
And the timers have rain sensors of some kind that mean that the, we won't be irrigating if it's. If we're in a uh, in a rain event or anything like that, I think the larger, I think we do need to look. Uh, at all of our meters and all of our accounts and and do an audit. To see if. To see if we're using. Public resources effectively for uh, uh, for irrigating our our properties and. I think Berwick sticks out just because it is, you know, on, like you say, typically eight to seven thousand dollars a month. During the dry season to irrigate it, I would love to see us, and you know, I guess we do have the PG Local Water Project. Uh, coming back to us. The business plan sometime next month, I guess. I I would love to see how we can use the water we're producing at the local water project. On our. On our parks to irrigate our parks and, you know, that, that is a direct offset, you know, if we're not paying eight thousand dollars a month. To Cal Am. And we're only having to spend a thousand dollars at the local water project, we just save seven thousand dollars, you know, yeah, we don't get that as direct revenue. But we just offset a cost, so I would really like to see how we can use these uh cost offsets with the uh non-potable water. And um. And I'll look forward to that discussion when the water project comes back to us, thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I know this is a receive report, so I'm, I, I just wanted to. Suggest that. Maybe, you know, looking at the, the cost of water. And how much it would cost if we supplied the water um through the local water project via the water truck. Could that be part of? You know, ideas of how we can perhaps save. Um, when the local water project comes back, so. Um, I know this is received report, I um appreciate. Uh, very much the check register and thank you, Ms. Beck, for bringing this um to our attention, I I think it's helpful to have. Um, additional eyes uh on, on expenditures that the city is, is using. The taxpayers' dollars on, so. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I I'll just comment, you know, because also on this check register, in addition to the high water expenses, there were. Um, expenses on there for reimbursement to council members, and we did have a. Public comment about that and council policy zero 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 two. Is the meeting and travel expenditure reimbursement where you can read about the. Policy in which allows the city staff, actually boards and commissions and council members. The authority to travel to um conferences. And different training sessions, uh, particularly conferences that are sponsored by. Organizations that our city holds a membership or affiliation with, like the League of California Cities. Um, and then reimbursements are covered in that policy as well, so by being uh the voting delegate, it it didn't. Only authorize that person to be able to go, it's open to all council members. Um, and the three folks that went and represented Pacific Grove, um, were all entitled to those reimbursements, that's why they're on the check register, so. Thanks.
Well, with no more uh council comment, then we'll move on. Actually, that brings us. To item fifteen A and B, which are in closed session. And let me confirm that with our city clerk.
Yes, sir. Um, those two items are up for a closed session, and so you, uh, the council will. Uh, sign off on this link and then re-sign uh. Up with the closed session link as used before for meeting. Regularly.
Mr. Mayor, you should take public comment on the two closed session items before we sign off.
Excellent. Yeah, so we have two items, conference with uh, legal counsel pending litigation, Blue Wave Enterprises LLC. And John Kramer versus City of Pacific Grove. And. Uh, Mr. Harvey, that doesn't note what the address is. Can we say that here?
Uh, cer- certainly, Mayor, I just don't.
I have it.
There you go.
It's, it's one, one seventy-six Central Avenue.
Okay, that's a former Pentecostal church, and the second item is conference with legal counsel pending litigation. City of Pacific Grove versus California Department of Tax and Fee Administration. That's uh, in regards to the failed uh, measure L. Uh, have sent the half percent sales tax. So we'll now go off for public comments. We have. Anyone from the public wishing to.
No, sir, I do, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Well, then that, that uh, ends our open session, begins our closed session. And uh, thank you, everyone, for being here, staff, public. And uh, have a very pleasant uh, night for those that are signing off. And for. For those for council, we'll see you in the, in a moment.
Happy Thanksgiving to the public.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Recording stopped.